We'll go ahead and call tonight's council meeting to order. And for tonight's invocation, we've got Pastor Dick Wamsley from the Teterboro Christian Church. Pastor?
Father of heaven, we thank you for your presence among us. You promised that, and we acknowledge you. I also thank you, God, for this body that's gathered here tonight, and for their concern for our community, for their desire to continue to make it a better place to live, and to also help to meet the needs of those who have special needs, and to keep us all together as one, a community, helping one another. Also thank you, God, for our other civil servants in our city who work hard, and for those who protect us, and who respond to emergency needs and other needs, and we pray that all will work together for your glory, and for the good of Teterboro, in Jesus' name.
Thank you. Do you want me to pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Sean Bertle.
Here.
Rodney Dorcheness.
Here.
Rob Heberling.
Here.
Bruce Jones.
Here.
Ray Coontz.
Here.
John Lawrence.
Here.
Martin Voda.
Here.
Earl Walters.
Here.
Eight aldermen present. Okay, the first thing we have is a motion to utilize the omnibus vote.
Second.
For approval of the minutes of the previous meetings and public hearings listed on tonight's agenda under the title Omnibus Vote Designation, or Dorcheness, and was it Alderman Jones, second? Discussion, hearing done, roll call.
Mr. Mayor, we need to pull the Personnel Committee meeting for July 7th for that amendment.
Yeah, we'll do that actually on the motion that follows.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Rodney Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, now I'll look for a motion to approve those minutes with the exception. We're going to pull the Personnel Committee meeting of February 7th to amend that, to make a correction. So unless there's another one that needs to be pulled, I would look for a motion to approve everything except that.
Salute.
Alderman Coontz, second.
Second, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Motion passes eight to zero. Okay, second, Alderman Walters. Any discussion, questions? Hearing done, roll call.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero. Okay, what I was going to do, was going to go ahead and move to a city attorney updates, but not having a city attorney makes that tougher. So I'm just going to make some quick comments here, just in time. Central time, 7:04.
Sorry about that, council.
When you get yourself comfortable, we're ready for...
I was in the parking lot out there, and I forgot my file, so...
City Attorney Updates.
Is that where we are right now?
That's where we are. I'll tell you, let me go ahead and preface it. You know, last week, I distributed a confidential memorandum from the city attorney regarding the city council's decision regarding the Hathaway Homes project. My hope was that this memorandum might help clarify what was, at least in my opinion, a possible misunderstanding regarding the response he had given to the few aldermen prior to the last city council meeting. As I remember, when he was asked if they could vote no regarding the planned commission's recommendation, the attorney found stated that they could vote yes or no to anything brought before them. And I agree with that. That's true. However, he was not asked to elaborate on any potential liability from voting in violation of maybe some existing laws. And so I think that letter he put out attempted to at least educate everyone, you know, on what some of those potential liabilities might be. Dave, is that pretty well prefaced?
Well, I think yes. I mean, a couple of minutes before the meeting, and I think everybody's read what I presented, and I don't want to pick on any alderman, because it doesn't make any difference. I was asked whether or not, you know, there was any way, whether or not the council was just basically rubber stamping this procedure with a location and sketch map. And the direct question was, you know, well, I said, you can either vote yes or no. And the code, as you know, specifically says the council is to approve or disapprove the recommendation of the Plan and Zoning Commission. And then, Mr. Mayor, I believe you were involved in that conversation, and I think your direct question was, well, yes, but is there some exposure to liability in the event that the criteria that is supposed to be looked at was all in place? Okay? And I told you, anytime this council votes on something that has to do with a private person or private entity, and you vote adversely to whatever their request is, you're always subjecting yourself to liability. That being said, I put together the, what the mayor talked about, and so I'll just basically open it up to any questions anybody has. Before I say that, though, I hope everybody received the Pettis letter.
Yes.
Well, it dawned on me in that letter that with all the annexation we've been doing out there, that that property may be the hole in the doughnut. And I confirmed that with Clerk Peabody today. So my recommendation to this council is to, let's do things the easy way and inexpensive way. Is that correct, may I, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Clerk Peabody, we are all the way around them now.
Correct.
So it's a walk in the park, so to speak. Otherwise, with regard to the Hathaway Homes matter, I think I did, in reviewing it, I did find some typos, and I also found a couple of different areas that I probably could have improved on. But I'm opening myself to any questions that you have.
Any questions for the city attorney regarding that issue?
No, no questions, Your Honor, but just my feeling on reading all the city ordinances and the subdivision rules, regulations that we put in as a council over the years, it appears to me, and I'm no lawyer, I'm a fairly well-read person, it appears to me that these firms that are trying to do this have to comply with all the things that they set forth in advance that they have to comply with to do this particular subdivision.
You're talking about, you said developers. Are you talking about the Hathaway Home, or are you just talking about in general?
Well, that particular issue, kind of, is Hathaway Homes, but it would apply to anyone that comes to ask for a building permit to go through the Planning Commission for a sketch map, or a location map, or preliminary plan. We've set things in motion that says if they comply with all these things, they should be allowed to go ahead and put that particular proposal in.
I agree with you, and I'm not convinced that the process is necessarily a good one, but that is what we have to live with at the present time. As I've mentioned, that we may want to review that process so that a potential criteria that has to be met satisfies and gives this council a little bit more latitude in making a decision. And again, I don't want to open up, or jeopardize the confidentiality of the memo that I prepared, but the bottom line is, is that in this particular situation, if there is another motion to renew the original motion, and I'll get to that from a procedural standpoint, then I think everybody needs to make sure that they understand that there's always potential liability. As an attorney, we are never going to tell you that whatever action you take is foolproof, because anybody can sue anybody for anything, but that doesn't mean they're going to recover.
Dave, with that said, again, and I briefly discussed this with you, I understand that anyone can sue anybody for anything. But as the city attorney, I do think it's somewhat your responsibility that if the city itself is venturing towards something, that it might be liability associated with it, and it appears that there's, you know, based on past history, a very good chance that we would not fare well, then it would be prudent that we be educated on that. So we know the degree of risk taken. I mean, again, there are certain times when we can make the decision, hey, we'll roll the dice and see how things come out, because we feel pretty confident. I guess my question to you, on behalf of this issue, is, do you feel confident enough that should we decide to stay with the previous vote and vote this thing down? Do you feel confident that if we were challenged, we would win? Or is there quite a degree of risk? I think that's what we need to know.
Well, I think I pointed that out to everybody, and I think that, again, it sure would have been nice if we would have some basis on which to go into closed session, but we don't, to the best of my knowledge. I think the criteria, as I set forth, the bottom line is, in this particular situation, the city council has, in this particular situation, followed the procedures. The developers presented their sketches, whatever. The city engineer, is Chil here tonight?
Yes.
Okay. The city engineer took a look at it, like he always does, the review process. The sketches also went, location map and sketch map also went to the heads of all the departments. They are by the code to get back with the Plan Commission within seven days if they have any problems with it. It's my understanding that none of the superintendent heads, with the exception maybe of the water department, there were no, you know, basically concerns about it. So when, then it goes to the public hearing. And the, again, citing what I cited before, after receiving the Plan's Commission's recommendation, which was to approve the location sketch map, the city council shall, at its next regular scheduled council meeting, approve or disapprove the location sketch maps based on the suitability criteria set out or outlined in Section 1123. And all you have to do is, that's what we have city engineers for, and that's why we have, that's why we have superintendents, and that's why we have the Plan Commission. So as Mr., or as Alderman Walters is, I think, pointing out is, is that this has been set out over time to maybe basically eliminate part of the burden on the council to try to delve into areas that they don't know about, or not as much about as the professionals do. So if you vote against it, then I believe, Mr. Mayor and Alderman, that you're going to have to have some reason, some criteria that was not met. And I, as I also pointed out, I think that when the stakes increase with regard to the action of any municipality that may be adverse to a private developer or a private person, the risk of litigation escalates. Meaning that if we, if this, somebody asks to rezone their property from R1 to R2, the risk of liability is not necessarily high, because that person has not had, doesn't have any investment in bringing that forward to this council. When you talk about subdivisions, there's a lot of money that is spent upfront on these type of things. And the longer these developers stay in the process, going next to the preliminary plan, and then to the final plan, and I'll defer to Joe on that, the more money that they have in this, and the more, the bigger the project, so to speak, and adverse ruling by this council, has a bigger effect on them. So obviously, the exposure to liability, regardless of whether they would be successful or not, is real.
I guess the frustrating thing is, in our current setup, there is no mechanism. If everyone meets the requirements, you know, based on their, there's no mechanism if we don't want it for some other reason. And I think that's, that's the frustrating thing is, if it's a financial reason, I'm not sure this process allows us to address it based on economics, does it? I mean, because you're asking a question, you asked the Plan Commission to check one thing. We don't ask them to, hey, look at the financials of the project and see if that makes sense. Maybe that's something we should do at some point, I just don't know what venue we would use.
Yeah, and I think that that's something that we really need to take a look at, but that's not going to help us with what we're addressing right now. And as I told one alderman that inquired after the, after the fact, and as you pointed out, Mr. Mayor, I get paid to keep my clients out of trouble. So if I'm going to err on one side or the other, I'm going to err on the side that I did in this particular situation, and I'm going to err by saying, look, I think that unless we, unless this council, and again, if you vote again, or if you don't vote again, it's your prerogative to vote yea or nay. It's just the consequences of voting yea or nay that we're addressing, I think I was addressing, trying to address. So I guess the fact of the matter is, unless you can take a look at the criteria that has to be met, if we vote it down again, then again, there's going to be some exposure there. Could be.
Alderman voted.
Thank you, Your Honor. Couple of items here that concern me regarding some of the discussions that's taking place. One of the things was the comments, if there was any kind of city approval. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe this was supposed to have come to the entire city council prior to any letters or anything being sent for our review and understanding of what the project was. Due to a time constraint, you, Mr. Mayor, were approached to change the wording of a letter from the "we" to "I," which basically states that you support the project, although the city council has not directed you to send the letter on our behalf. Is that correct?
That's correct. There was a timeframe, I think they had to have it in by the end of that week, and to not be able to do that would have weakened their application. They asked me, I said, well, I can't speak to the other aldermen. In an effort to go ahead and let you get your packet in, you know, I'll sign that letter.
Okay, and I appreciate that. That also happened with the previous administration, with the former mayor. I have a copy of both letters. The same situation presented itself. For whatever reason, I do not know, it sounds to me like somebody failed to plan on their own behalf. With that also, the, there are several issues that I am concerned about. The big thing was, there were four of us who received a nice book. How many have seen this book? The mayor, myself, Mr. Heberling, and Mr. Walters. Mr. Walters received his copy due to the fact he was Streets and Sewer Chairman, which is respected. Mr. Heberling and myself received ours, as we were the aldermen who oversee this ward. And we really didn't get a chance to open any discussions regarding this. We got to review what was in the book. The only comment I did make at the time was, I'd like to see single-family homes as opposed to duplexes. And I think that was, that was looked at and reviewed, and that's what the new proposal came back with, which is a plus due to the fact that that neighborhood is single-family homes. It is not a duplex neighborhood, it is basically single-family homes, and I think that's the proper footprint. The big issue we run into, ladies and gentlemen, and fellow aldermen, is the fact, the finances of this type of development. What we are looking at is a detriment to the finances to an already struggling city, not just the city of Teterboro, but any municipality in the state and this country, trying to make payments. These developments, the real estate taxes are based on the ability to pay, not on value of the property itself. With that said, I think we should have had the option, as this city council, to look at this prior to going to the Planning Committee for site approval, but we were, we were presented with a site plan. Does it meet what says in the book? Yeah, it meets it, I'm not going to argue that. However, as an elected official of this city, I also have to look and see what this, what this project does to our bottom line. And right now, we are looking at a $22 million purchase for a water treatment facility that we're going to be mandated to pay for. When you start looking at the dollars and cents, and how long we have to finance some of these projects, this is something that we need to take a serious look at and see how it affects not only the city, but the school systems within our community. And it is not pretty. With that, Your Honor, thank you.
Anybody got any questions for the city attorney?
I've got, Tommy, there's not a motion on the floor, and we're having a lot of discussion about a project that there's no motion to be made. So, I mean, if we were on City Attorney, and if we're way off course, unless I'm wrong.
No, I think, I think you're right to a certain degree, but the purpose is, he's updating us on something he looked at, and concerns he has about it, so I wanted to give the alderman the chance to address him with their comments. Anyone have any comments for the city attorney? If not, Dave, do you have additional stuff on other topics that you need to?
No, that's all I have. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We'll move on to discussions and motions to approve, adopt, and deny, and/or table, and/or amend, or refer to an appropriate committee, and hold or impart the following listed motions, ordinances, and resolutions. And on the agenda, the next thing we have is a motion to renew, the motion to accept the recommendation by the Plan Commission approving the location map and sketch map submitted by Hathaway Homes. Would anyone like to make that motion?
Your Honor, I'll make that motion.
Okay, can I get a second for discussion? Anyone make a second for discussion purposes? One once, one twice, no second, motion dies for lack of a second. Okay, that makes the next one moot. The one after that one moot, so I think that brings us to mayor updates. Last week, we had Senator Andy Manar introduce Senate Bill 2392, which is the new Tanaska bill, the new old Tanaska bill, I guess is the original project. And so, you know, hopefully he can get some, some leverage there and get some support for that. What a wonderful thing that would be for this area. We've talked about it for a decade now, and we just keep our fingers crossed and hope that things go our way this time. Yesterday evening, I had the pleasure of meeting with State Representative Sue Shear in Stonington. She had a town hall meeting there, and she did mention that she definitely supports the Tanaska project, so I'm obviously glad to hear that. The only other thing I have is, the, we've got a community garden here in town that's being planned right now, and it's going to be at the Davis Memorial Christian Church, and I attended one of those meetings there. And I think that's just a wonderful thing for this city to get behind and support if we can. I briefly this morning, or this, tonight, talked to two aldermen in that ward, and asked them to maybe contact the people there and offer their support. The tougher times, again, I think it's more important that you have some kind of mechanism out there to bring people together, and this community garden is one of those things that will do that. We've got generations now that not only don't know how to plant a garden, you know, they don't know how to prepare the food. And we spend a lot of our time and resources trying to help others, you know, the, oh, I'm trying to think of the word. Oh, the food pantry, for example, is something a lot of donations go to. And I had a chance to stop by CEFS a year ago or so, and one of the things I noticed when I opened up the freezer that was there was full of frozen chickens. And I said, you know, I said, you go through a lot of these? And she kind of put her head down, and goes, a lot of those we throw out, because our clients don't know how to cook a chicken. They don't have the pasta to cook them in. They said, we go through a lot of macaroni and cheese, but, you know, not that kind of food. And again, it's one of those things where just generation doesn't have the ability to prepare food. So this community garden idea, I really like the idea, is going to teach people to plant, grow, and prepare foods, and I think it's something excellent. So some of the produce will be used for the food pantry, but anyone that helps with the project, you also get paid back in vegetables yourself. So I certainly urge everyone to get behind it. I have contacted Lincolnland about the possibility of them teaming with a project to help build a storage shed. I did tell them that the city would help where it can, and I hope we can do that for them. So I think it's a great thing. That's all I got, unless you guys have questions? Alderman Coontz?
Sir, on the community garden, I compliment Pastor Bill Kearns on taking the lead on that, and currently at the I worship center in Teterboro, on Lawrence Avenue, very dare contemplating of looking into a community garden, and we see some funds to do that as well.
Great.
And I would just ask that the rest of our community leaders look into it, see if we can make this a really big project, and see if we can get quite a few sites going. I agree with what you said about it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Hearing done, we'll move on to committee reports. Discussions under motions to approve, adopt, and/or deny, and/or table, and/or amend, and refer to an appropriate committee, in whole and part, the matters regarding the following subject matters discussed at the committee level. We'll start off with the Personnel Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our first motion is a motion to approve a tuition reimbursement in the amount of $268.50 to Assistant Fire Chief Mike Cruz, and I'll offer that as a motion.
Second, Alderman Bertle, discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
And the next motion was a motion to approve the city health request for each department, I'm sorry, the summer health request for each department, and to advertise the following positions. For HBO, one high school or college student. Water Department, three unique college students. Street and Sewer, four college students, and two manpower employees to help pick up brush during March 16th to April 26th. At the cemetery, five total, a combination of unique and/or college students. And then at the lake, one college student or high school student, and then two unique employees. And I'll offer that as a motion.
Okay, get a second on that. Second, Alderman Bertle, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
And then, offer a motion to approve the minutes of the Personnel Committee meeting for February the 19th.
Get a second on that. Alderman Bertle, discussion or comment? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes. Okay, Lake Airport Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had several motions come out of the Lake and Airport Committee, the first of which is the motion to approve the dates of the EAA breakfast of May 19th, June 16th, July 21st, August 18th, September 15th, and October 20th, for the 2013 EAA Jaburu Chapter 1315 monthly fly-in, drive-in breakfast. That's held at the Teterboro Airport, and also in the motion is to approve a 25 cent per gallon discount on fuel during the hours of the breakfast, which are 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. on those dates. Make that in form of motion, Your Honor.
Second, Alderman Walters, discussion or comment? Hearing done, roll call.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The next motion was to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance allowing turkey hunting bow only at the north end of the lake for spring turkey hunting season for this year only, with a review by the committee. I'll make that in the form of a motion with a comment.
Got a second? Second, Alderman Walters, go ahead with your comment, Alderman Bertle.
It's a very unique situation. I've never seen anybody do bow hunting with a, for turkey, and Superintendent Jackson was very much supportive of this. I think it's a good thing for the community.
Any other comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Sean Bertle.
Yes.
Rodney Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Motion, get a second.
Second.
Alderman Heberling, discussion or comment? Hearing done, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against, motion passes.
The next motion was to allow Superintendent Jackson to seek bids for sanitation services at the lake, for Lake Taterville, for the 2013 season, I'll make that in form of a motion.
Okay, get a second on that one.
Second, Your Honor.
Alderman Walters, discussion or comment?
Sure.
Alderman Lawrence.
Do I understand this is to include the furnishing of?
Porta potts.
The porta potts.
Correct.
That is correct.
The bid will be awarded and based on them furnishing the porta potts.
Correct. Other questions, comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Randy Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burtle.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, and the final motion was to allow Superintendent Jackson to seek bids for cabin cleaning at Lake Taterville. I'll place that in the form of a motion.
Okay, second on that one.
Second.
Alderman Heberling, discussion or comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
Yes.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burtle.
Yes.
Randy Dorcheness.
Yes.
Motion passes eight to zero. Moving on to Water Environmental Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. There was one motion that come out of the Water Environmental Committee meeting. That motion was to allow Superintendent Spiegel to purchase a 2013 Ford III F350 Supercab four-by-four pickup, an F5 body, from Bob Ridings at the state bid price, with two additions, at a cost of $38,289. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion, and I have a comment after a second.
Okay, get a second. Alderman Walters, go ahead with your comment, Alderman Dorcheness.
This truck is in the current budget, and if the truck is not provided until the next fiscal year, then it will be included in the next fiscal year budget, and we have the money to do that.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing done, roll call.
Bruce Jones.
Yes.
Ray Coontz.
Yes.
John Lawrence.
Yes.
Martin Voda.
No.
Earl Walters.
Yes.
Sean Burtle.
Yes.
Randy Dorcheness.
Yes.
Rob Heberling.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to one. Next, we have a motion to approve and ratify payment of bills in the amount of $206,555.75.
I'll make that motion, Your Honor, with some comments.
Okay, second, Alderman Burtle, go ahead with your comments, Alderman Lawrence.
Fairly low period for the second pay period of the month, the total is $206,555. That includes some bigger ticket items that are basically budgeted items. Our fuel this month, Christian County FS amounts to $13,390. That is basically diesel at $3.45 a gallon, and no lead at $2.87 or $2.90 a gallon, which I think is a little bit below what it's turned into be this present month. But does run in the average of about $13,000 to $14,000 a month this time of year. We pay the electric bills mostly the second part of the month. Our Ameren Rural Electric Shelby, cost of delivery is $10,610. And direct energy, the cost per kilowatt hour is $9,408, so that we're spending $20,018 on utilities. Also, in regard to fuel, the airport is buying 8,500 gallon half gas, and that's at $4.42 gallon roughly. Of course, this is for resale, and we're putting up $37,784 in that expenditure. Our water department's buying another batch of the remote red meters for $19,340, and another $55,000 for footings and bells and that type of stuff. We're also putting another $14,123 in the repairs and redo of the water department's well number two, which Superintendent Spiegel's been telling us about forever, probably. We've got a Van Deavere Engineering Cleveland and Longstreet lift station repair of $24,162. I raised a question with Alderman Walters just before the meeting, that we have spent something like a half a million dollars on repairing lift stations, and how come we have a $24,000 bill? And he is basically saying he will follow up and find out whether it occurred after or before.
I don't have my file with me tonight, or I could address that issue, but I will find out and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
You too. Got a total of our city engineers' bills of about $14,730. Those bills break down to roughly payable out of our sewer project fund, or sales tax